Well, it's now seven o'clock, so let's go ahead and get started. We're going to start off this evening with public hearings regarding the foregone request. That's before, so I'm going to have Mike explain that.
We have foregone. Just kidding. So what happened was is when I was putting the budget together, I had a slight miscalculation with the annexation and the levy rates, which resulted in a $10,588 under what we could have taken. And then on top of that was $712 from a it came from a telecommunications company like lawsuit, the way they had the lawsuit come through, they split that up with everybody at $712 that came to the City of Weezer, which resulted in $11,300 that we could have taken, but did not get budgeted in. And by the time we realized this, we'd already went through the budget process. If we don't do the resolution to put this $11,300 as foregone, we lose it. When we put it as foregone, it adds to the $93,248 that we currently have as foregone. So that would bring the grand total foregone amount up to 104,548.
And if I understand right, what would happen is if we needed to in the future, we could ask for that that money
Yes.
money in a future tax request.
You can. So if we levy this as foregone, what they do is it goes into like a state pool per se, and we can use that money at a later time if it was needed. So if we wanted to budget it for something in specific, it has to be something specific. You can budget that in and ask for foregone by resolution in another budget.
Okay. That being said, are there any comments from the public in favor of this? Okay. Going once, going twice. Okay. Any neutral comments? Okay, going once, twice. Any negative comments? Any comments against this? Okay. That being said, public hearing portion of this is closed. Okay, moving on to the regular city council meeting. We have roll call.
Councilmember Haper.
Here.
Who?
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Chipman.
Here.
And councilperson Barbaris is unable to join us this evening due to illness. Okay. And tonight, we have Wes Higgins to give the invocation, and it will be followed by thirty seconds of silence for the four students from in Moscow who were murdered a year ago tonight. And then they'll have the invocation or the pledge of allegiance by Wayne Wallace.
Our Father in heaven, great God, just come before you know, Father, just asking your guidance and direction as the city council meets together to make decisions, to to plan ahead and to just look at what needs to be done, which just ask, Father, that you've given them the wisdom, the discernment, the understanding that they need. We just thank you, great God, for for this opportunity to come before you and present the issues of the day. We give you praise now, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any commission reports?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, sir. The library report, real quick. Two thousand five hundred seventy-five checkouts this last month, which is exciting. They had over thirty-two hundred patrons walk through the doors with thirty-four new cards being sent out and opened. And there are three hundred and eighty-seven new books that they put into circulation. So go check out those great new things. They had PBS Storytime, which I told you guys about last month, which was October twelfth. Eighteen kids showed up with twelve adults, and that was a smash hit. They also were, of course, in charge of the craft fair that happened last weekend, and that was a a great success as well. So they're very excited for that. They do have a Christmas open house coming up last week of this month, and they invite you to go out and see Mr. and Mrs. Claus, some craft vendors as well, and cookies galore. They are closed for Thanksgiving Day and the day after, though, just so that everyone knows. They're closed that so those two days.
Any other commission reports?
Mayor, just reporting for economic development. Wanted to, just as a reminder for people out there who don't know, the Economic Development Task Force has been working towards getting the Main Street program launched. We've spent the past year reaching out and researching various communities and the Main Street America program. And I am going to defer part of my commission report to our recently hired Main Street project manager. And so I'd like to ask Brenda to come up and update the council on Main Street.
Please state your name and address.
Okay.
Yep.
Brenda Matson, seven fifteen Haas Road in Weezer. Well, so Main Street America is definitely a new program to me, but I'm very interested in it. It, I have my cheese, cheese, by the way. Main Street America leads a movement committed to strengthening communities through preservation-based economic development in older and historic downtowns and neighborhoods through commercial districts. They work with a nationwide network of coordinating programs and local communities to bring economic vitality back to downtowns while celebrating their historic character and bringing communities together. Don't we just hit all five? Okay. So how did Weezer become a Main Street? We're currently still working on becoming a Main Street. We're not officially there yet, but we are working with the state to use an MOU so we can operate until we officially become a 501(c)(3). I have just recently been hired, probably a little shy of a month, being project manager, so it's been a fire hose of information and reading about the program on the internet, but it's all really exciting and really it's just great. I think it's going to be an amazing thing for the community to to give back to not only business community, but also into our just our community members that are so passionate about being a part of our downtown. So I'm excited to get to know a little bit more. My background is I was raised in Weezer. I've gone through school, all the way graduated. After graduating, I went to college, became a teacher, came back and taught at Pioneer School here in town for ten years. And then I moved to Boise for a couple of years, topped in the West Davis School District. That is nothing like the Weezer School District. Not in a good way. Weezer School District way better. Spent just a little bit of years there and became real estate agent. So I've been a Realtor for five years now. We also owned, my husband and I owned and operated a business in town for two years as well. We opened right when COVID came in, and then we worked through it for two years, and now I'm moving on to this. So it fits into working from home. I think being a teacher, being a business owner, being a Realtor has given me kind of a well-rounded, I guess, opinion of what we've got going on in our community and the good things we have and maybe some areas where we can kind of fill in those gaps. And I think this program is going to be a great way to do that. So I'm excited about that. Let's see here. What piqued my interest was, this was an easy one for me. I've always I've always just had a low for our community. I think I think it's a hard one to beat. Like, you have support no matter what. If there's something you need, you have not just somebody, you have multiple people out there who are ready to support you and give however what is it you need? Moral support, you know, whatever. You always have somebody ready to jump in and do that. And just even at a young age, I kind of recognized that as like, man, you go other places, and that's just, that's really not a thing everywhere. So I think we're a little different and a little special here, which makes me excited for the program because I I think we're just going to have a lot of support and a lot of community involvement with it. It's just something that's, I feel like it's going to give back and build towards that downtown, which not only benefits our you know, our business owners, but like I said, it's going to come back to the community as well. So we can kind of tie all that together. And then what are our goals for the first few months? Getting through the firehose. And then I have been working on setting up our nonprofit, writing our bylaws and getting them approved by the board. Currently, our board is Lena Haper, Melanie Hickey, John Stewart, and Rick Besses. So we are working together and getting that going, and then we will be reaching out to the community to kind of get volunteers for other committees once we get a little further into that. Have I left anything else? Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, how long is the program scheduled to run, or does it just depend?
Well, John Stewart, if I have this correct, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but he, through MTE, they volunteered to pay for the next five years of membership through Main Street America.
And the Main Street program, we hope, will be something that is sustainable indefinitely. And I do want to add, and I think I've done this in our smaller economic group, but part of the reason that we are involved in Main Street is because, once you are a Main Street, there are funding avenues for your projects that are not funded unless you are a Main Street. So it just was one more avenue to try and inject some money into our downtown.
We're excited to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other commission reports? Any committee reports?
Yes, we had a meeting, the public safety meeting. Do you want us to talk about that? Okay, of the public safety and
Facilities.
Facilities. Facilities, I'm sorry. There's so many committees. Facilities committee meeting. We met with an organization that is currently doing the tractor pull at the rodeo, and they're looking at moving and using our land down by Mortimer's Island. And so we're just now in the process of starting that discussion, but they, the whole group of them came and presented a lot of great information. They are preparing a packet and some information for council to review. It's not something that they're wanting to do until 2025, so we have time to look through and really finalize and make sure it's a benefit for both organizations, for the city and for them. And so we can make sure that it's a great event for both of them. They have some great great ideas, and we're excited to see what they're able to pull together, but we'll have more on that next month.
Pull together.
Pull together.
They've been using the rodeo grounds, and it has been bringing about twelve hundred people to Weezer for these events. And they're starting off with one, but over time, it may build up to four events a year. Okay, thank you. Okay, could we have department reports?
City of Weezer department reports, October 2023. Weezer Police Department, adult arrests. There were eighteen misdemeanor, one felony. Juvenile arrests. There was six misdemeanors, zero felony citations. There were twelve misdemeanor, twenty-two infraction. Zero parking. Calls for service were four hundred and seventeen. Case reports, thirty-two. Felony one, misdemeanor twenty-four. Accident two and incident five. City of Weezer Animal Control, dog complaints. There was twenty-six. Impounded were fourteen. Returned to owner fifteen. Adopted out, two. Transferred out, two. Cat complaints were nine. Impounded, eight. Returned to owner, three. Adopted out, three. Transferred out, zero. County assist, zero. Wildlife, four. And livestock, three. City of Weezer ordinance complaints, weeds, two. Junk and debris, three. Abandoned vehicles, six. Parking, zero. Camper occupancy, zero. VIN inspections, four. Traffic hazard, zero. Five warnings and zero citations. Waste water department, the October flow for 2022 was thirty-three million, one hundred and thirty thousand. The October, October flow for 2023 was thirty-six million, seventy thousand. In 2022, the BODs were thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight pounds in October. The 2023 BODs was thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-four pounds. And projects they worked on, where they ran the belt press, they hauled eighty-eight tons of bio solids to Clay Peak. They installed new belt on belt press hopper that loads the dump truck. They jetted and cleaned all problem storm lines on Pioneer Street and repaired broken storm pipe. The water department, their water production in October of 2022 was twenty point zero one three million gallons. October of 2023, seventeen point seven eight five million gallons. They red meters, they winterized outbuildings, they inspected West Night subdivision water install. They rebuilt one and installed two new services, and they continued exercising valves. The electric depart, department power consumption for September of 2022 was three million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine kilowatts. September of 2023, four million, two hundred and thirty-six, seven hundred and eighty-nine kilowatts. They installed temp, a temp transformer for Walgreens. They installed a transformer basements and secondary splice boxes for Sundance subdivision. They fixed primary air switch that runs the football lights. They fixed a blown lighting arrester that caused an outage on the fifteen, or sorry, sixteen feeder. The customer outage time was two hours, and they installed temp power for Treasure Valley Farms. Street department ran two loads of asphalt on various potholes, graded some problem alleys, started alley cleanup, and prepared equipment for snow season. The recreation department, tackle football is done for another year. It was a successful league, big thanks to the coaches. Boys' basketball is starting up for the first of November with eight teams total. Girls' basketball clinic has started with sixty-four girls participating. We are currently taking registration for women's volleyball as well as men's basketball. The building department issued three building permits this month, one single-family dwelling, one patio cover, and one carport. Mayor and city council, that concludes your department reports for October 2023.
I have one quick question. I noticed in the police report, there were I can't remember whether it was four hundred and seventeen or four hundred and seventy-one calls to service. Can't remember getting that information, but that's like thirteen a day. Is that is that about normal?
So they go to ambulance rooms in most cases?
Ambulance runs.
I think it's any call that comes in from dispatch that's dispatched to the police department.
Yep. Okay. That's correct.
Okay, that's part of the number.
Okay. Next item. So everyone had a chance to look at the minutes for the last meeting? And
Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes from our from the last minutes, the last meeting. Move that we accept the minutes from our last council meeting.
On October 10.
On October 10. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, and next item is bills.
Mayor, I would make the motion to approve the bills and have them sent to the treasurer so warrants can be drawn for payment. I move that we accept the bills and send them on to the treasurer so warrants can be drawn for payment.
I'll second.
And move and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Barbaris. Chipman?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Haper?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Right, motion passed. And there is no unfinished business. And the first item on the new business is presentation by the Weezer Middle School exploratory class. And Ms. Thompson.
Good evening.
Could you give your name and address?
Courtney Thompson.
Yes.
Ten sixteen Haas Road.
Thank you.
And then if you don't mind, could I have my students come in?
Of course.
They didn't know about that, so they're not going to know.
No, no. We won't require your name and address.
You don't have to talk.
You just have to smile. Yeah, right. Smile.
Scooch up, scooch up.
So I teach two, I, I, I sent you a letter, but I thought I would go over it for the people who perhaps are in the audience as well. But I teach two classes of computers, and I've got about forty-eight students total within those two classes. So our process is, we're learning to use the computer, we're learning to write letters, we're learning the Oreo method in, in writing a letter in terms of positive news, negative news, positive news, which goes against how you eat an Oreo, right? Like, you eat the middle side, middle first, right? So we, we talk about, okay, we're going to open with a greeting and an introduction and an idea and how it's fantastic. And then we start in the middle paragraph, and that's where we get to the pocketbook and the sting of the project. And so we do the research and figure out, what is that project going to cost us? What, how are we going to justify it, et cetera? And then we close our paragraph with, why is this the best idea in the whole wide world and why the city council would say yes to it? Right? So with this letter-writing process, I came up with, well, let's, we live in Weezer. I always did this project about two years ago, for those of you who were on the city council then. And two years ago, their projects were very entertainment-minded, and they wanted a skate park, and they wanted a splash pad, and they wanted bleachers at the pool. And these guys are very serious, and their top projects were roads. We want our roads and sidewalks fixed. So it's just kind of interesting to see that shift between our thought processes between these two classes, forty-eight kids, and that was their process. We start out with, everybody gets to make, we're in groups, everybody gets to make a suggestion as to what their idea is. Everybody gets to choose or to make a suggestion. So we wound up with about twenty-five per class suggestions, and then their group gets, gets to veto one of those until we narrow it down. So their suggestions, their vetoes, their ideas. I, I'm just there to kind of herd cats, you know, like at that point. So we go through, and they have to do the research. They have to go on the Google, and they, so all of this is still computer skills. All of this is typing skills. All of this is is figuring out how to put it into a letter and what that looks like. So then they go in and have to be very specific about what these things are going to cost. And I don't remember if it was one of these people, I'm not sure, actually went with a yardstick to measure how wide a sidewalk is in front of the Weezer Middle School to figure out the concrete dimensions and that type of thing. So, was that any of you guys? Okay. Well, even if it was, they're probably not going to say yes. So very specific, and then they have to say, okay, this is where I give them the plot twist, right? Like, who's going to pay for this? You know, like, so then we have a conversation about how many properties are in Weezer, and what does that tax look like? And you know, that your money's already budgeted for your town already, so how are we going to ask the taxpayers? So it's kind of a letter-writing and civic-minded project all at the same time. So anyways, then they get together in their groups, and they come up with the final letters that you guys have received. So they've taken each of their individual letters, the good stuff out of this guy, the the best thing out of here, and they've made a single letter to send. And then this gets to be the culmination of their project. They get to see what happens, and they get to see, so they're volunteering to be here. I didn't pay them. I, I, you know, I didn't offer even extra credit to them, but they're volunteering to be here to watch this process come to this end. So I don't know if they would be willing to ask questions, but you could try. I mean, if they would answer questions, I'm sorry, but you could try to ask them some questions, and we'll see what.
I would ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and any one of you can answer. It's just, so what was the biggest thing that you learned out of this project?
Anybody have an idea?
Are you guys in?
We can, like, look away or something. Any ideas, anything you want to say with what you learned? They're all telling me to say something. It, I think it varies per class. It varies per student, it varies per group. Because some of them were really good about just writing the facts out, but then some struggled with, okay, now how do I close it up? Or, you know, that, that type of process. So I think it varies per group, but we're not going to get it out of them again.
I, I was expecting a, how much money it costs to do everything. It's, that's the hardest part of of trying to have a great city is just everything costs so much money.
Right.
Really hope that that was a great aha moment for you guys.
Anyway, so I appreciate your time. I appreciate you willing to visit with us or, or see us, or so that they can see the end of this project. I also explained to them that the projects that we talked about last two years ago or so is like the sawdust in the playground and, and those types of things. And Mr. Mayor, when we, we talked a little bit after that, you had mentioned that some of these things may come to fruition. So it was nice to tell them, like, you know, you can be a seventh and eighth grade student at Weezer Middle School and still change the place that you live and still affect change and still be a voice in, in the, in your city. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, and, and I want to say, I was impressed by how you put, put things together, the research that you had done, how close you came to to putting it realistically. Okay. Some of your, some of your costs were above and some of your costs were below. But, but the process, I was very impressed with. And for, for middle school students to put these proposals together, it's, it's very impressive. And trouble of it is, we're perplexed by some of the very same things that you're talking about and trying to figure it out and how to squeeze it in our budget. And we give all of these problems to Mike here.
Extra coffee.
Because he's in charge of public works.
It, it is, it's kind of funny what they're highlighting. Like, the kids who chose sidewalks were like, we want these sidewalks, and these, they were very specific about their locations. I don't know if you I don't know if that part made it. But they were very specific about, we want these sidewalks fixed and all of that. And I, I know that sometimes sidewalks are not the city council's responsibility or the city of Weezer's responsibility, sometimes the property owner. However, it was very interesting to see that's where their
I will probably be taking one of these, these letters to one of the property owners.
Oh. Thank you.
So, yeah, Mayor, just one more thing. I want to thank you for, for taking the time to to, to be here and to let us know what, what you think in the projects that, that you want us to work on. And and like the mayor said, a lot of these things, we're on the same page with you. It takes time. And it takes effort and, and it's much harder than, than you would think. It's much harder than I would think, but please know that you've been heard. And a lot of these things, there is a lot of support for, and we'll be working on them.
We want you guys to be happy here, too, right? We want you to come back and continue to want to live in Weezer, so it's good to hear your guys' opinion. I, I know that sometimes adults can forget what kids want, but if we, if we believe truly in what our sign says, that we care for our kids, we love our kids, it's, it's these things right here that make us go, all right, now, we need to refocus. This is what our kids want. So what can we do to make that happen? So thank you, guys, for being here. I know that it's a late night for you, but it's good to see you guys.
We appreciate it.
And we appreciate your teachers for coming up with these kind of projects.
Yeah. Do you have any questions that you want to ask? Thank you, again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to appoint Brenda Matson to the Economic Development Council as the Main Street as the Main Street Coordinator. As you know, the Economic Development Council is appointed by the, the mayor and approved by the city council. And so I would like, uh, your approval to appoint, uh, Brenda Mattson.
Here, could I make one little adjustment? Um, we've learned through our outreach with Main Street that, um, she will actually be the project manager. Will be her title instead of a coordinator. We'll get that into the minutes.
We can change that.
I move to appoint Brenda Mattson, um, to the Economic Development Task Force as the Main Street Project Manager.
My second.
Okay, you moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Welcome aboard, Brenda. Okay, next is Resolution six eighty-six to approve eleven thousand three hundred dollars in ordon for the fiscal year 2024 budget. We had a discussion on this earlier, or we had a public hearing on this earlier. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, the ordon amount of eleven thousand three hundred dollars to go to the fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Third.
Yes, we moved in second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Haper?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is Resolution number six eighty-seven for the airport grant agreement and acceptance. And Mike, could you fill us in? Let me talk to you, Brenda.
Can I get reading this? I just don't have a roll call.
I don't mean to interrupt, but can I ask for a point of clarification?
Yes.
I apologize. For resolutions, should we be reading this word for word and then suspend the rules to, or am I, am I wrong?
Oh, that's not ordinances?
Just, but not resolutions?
We haven't in the past.
Okay, no, I just, um, that's what I meant.
That's a good question.
But usually, no, we do have a resolution with the number, right?
You have?
Yeah, we have the resolution.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
In your packet, the agreement was first and the last page of the pack, of the agreement is the resolution.
Yeah.
And this is which airport, ma'am?
This is for the seal coat and restri, grant that we've received. This, uh, resolution, what this does is allows us to receive our funds from the state of Idaho portion. So for the eleven thousand eight hundred eighty-six seventy-eight.
Okay.
So this comes kind of at the end of the project?
Once the project's completed, then we submit the resolution to state and they refund us the eleven thousand. Or, or five percent usually.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve Resolution six eighty-seven, the airport grant, uh, in agreement and accept.
Okay.
I'll say.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Haper?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is to approve the purchase of a Case or a John Deere loader for the street department with Sourcewell three, thirty-three, six, eight, thirty-nine, not to exceed two hundred and twenty-one thousand eleven dollars. And Mike, would you like to explain this?
So we've looked at quite a few loaders. Uh, Ron and I have been out looking at a few. We, we've specked out a bunch of them. What we came down to is the Case is the one that we've actually drove and touched and, and liked. Um, unfortunately, some of these we'd have to put on orders, so we wanna get them both on here. We are gonna go over and look at the John Deere, that's the one eighty, one hundred eighty thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. The difference is, is that is a little bit smaller loader with, with less lift capacity. So we're looking at the bigger one. The reason we wanna put them both on here, though, is so we can go, if we go look at the John Deere, we're approved for the purchase going forward. Uh, we did budget for, for this. So I guess if you have any questions, we'll probably do that. With, like I said, we're down to either or. We just, until we drive the John Deere, we don't wanna make a decision, but we didn't wanna wait another month to bring it back to council.
On the Case, if they have questions, Ron, too?
Yeah, and if they have any questions, Ron, it's here, he drove the Case. He's touched them all.
Just to remind you, um, the loader is used by almost all of our departments and it, the one we have is, is pretty near the end of its life expectancy.
It's twenty-seven years old.
So we're dividing the cost between all of the departments.
Remind me, so we had budgeted, I thought it was about two hundred thousand?
Two hundred and seventy-five.
It's two seventy-five, okay, okay. And so, great.
Both of these?
Both of these are under, under budget.
The one we was looking at was one size. The reason we budgeted a little more also was because we looked at it, when I priced that out, we did as a cap for a larger loader, but we, since driving them, realized that the bigger loader won't fit downtown. And like I said, Ron can answer any questions on size. He's, he's actually been in.
So, so is the larger loader that, that we have, of course, here, is it worth the extra thirty-two grand?
Yeah, yes, if we, if we decide to, if it'll, the dimensions of it were the biggest part. The, the bigger loader, we wanted a bigger loader because we need the extended reach. We need the heavier lift capacity. We have vaults that we can't lift now, or it struggles a lot to lift now. So having the extra lift capacity definitely makes a difference. Uh, snow-wise, picking up snow, moving snow, a bigger loader, better. The problem was, is we had to find one within our dimensions that could back up and turn inside the roads. And like I said, so Ron's been over and drove this one. The Case, we actually got sit in the one that was going to Cascade and he got to operate it and use it. Uh, we have, do set up the John Deere to go operate and look at and see if it'll fit our needs. But it was in eastern Idaho until last week. And so as soon as he gets back here, we'll go put our hands on it.
So Ron, will this one work?
Tell me that. Which one, which one is that?
State your name.
State your name.
Ron McDaniel, uh, Street Department Supervisor, City of Weezer.
So the, the Case is the one that you, you've driven?
I, I've driven the Case and the Caterpillar and I ruled the Caterpillar out. It just isn't for us.
Okay.
And it, it was actually more than the Case also, price-wise. And larger dimensions, it would've, it would've been too cumbersome for turning. When we load a dump truck downtown, uh, with snow, you've got the dump truck parked in the parking and the loader sideways to it, loading into it. When we back up, we don't wanna hit our light posts or buildings downtown. So it's just a little too large for what we need. The Case seemed to fit the bill. I'm a little skeptical on the, the John Deere. It's the same model as the one that we have now. Excuse me, it has a little bit more horsepower because it's newer. But it doesn't, it has a similar lifting capacity to the one that we had, or the one that we have. So with that being said, the vaults for the wastewater, uh, some bigger, heavier lifting things that we do, I'm not sure if the John Deere will, will hold that. It, it will, I don't think it'll perform the way we want it to. So right now, from what I've seen, I think the Case is, is a great machine.
So that's your, your recommendation is, is that we get the Case?
Until I look at the John Deere, yes.
Okay.
We want to rule it out first.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna jump to any conclusions. I just, I think we'll be underpowered with the John Deere. I wanna look at it.
How difficult is it to repair a Case?
A Case, so it's no different than any other one. The Case actually comes with a, uh, a maintenance program that's worth quite a bit of money for the first three years. They come out and do the service on site. Caterpillar and John Deere, they give you a dry filter system. Basically, every five hundred hours, they'll ship you a box of dry filters. They, that doesn't include air filters. There are no fluids included with those two, the John Deere and the Caterpillar. Anything that, that we need during the first three years is covered by Case. So it's, it, that, take into account with the, the price, I think, I think it's, right now, it's looking pretty decent.
Okay, which is great. But that's an awesome, awesome maintenance thing. And, and so when that expires, okay, I mean, we've had this, our current loader for what, twenty years? I think is what we'd said.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven years. So I'm assuming we want the same longevity out of this one. I don't know Case at all. Never heard of the brand until two minutes ago.
Well, we, we have two Backos in, in the shop right now that we've used forever. We had a Series K that was equal to one that we have now before those two. They're a well-known brand that's been around forever.
Okay, good, good. I'm just thinking longevity.
And I, I think they have longevity, more lifting power instead of less wear and tear.
I, I'd rather have too much power and not need it than to be underpowered and struggle.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the purchase of a Case or John Deere loader for the street department with Sourcewell thirty-three, six, thirty-nine, not to exceed two hundred and twenty-one thousand eleven dollars.
My second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Haper?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item is to approve purchase of a V-blade for the loader with Sourcewell thirty-three, six, eighty-nine. And Ron, since you're here, would you like to explain that?
Okay, so the, the V plow, if you will, is a six-way plow. It, uh, it will form a V in the front. It can go at any different angle, going all the way back to a V in the, in the rear to, to plow in a, in a V formation and push everything off the side, similar to a train. This, this thing, uh, if you've watched in the past where we move snow downtown, we, we plow the snow to the center of the road with the graders. And we come back with a loader and the backhoes and we push it into a pile. There and specifically in the subdivisions, this, this machine would do, would add us a, a, another machine to perform the same task, but I think more efficiently. It, it would take your grader from pushing the snow just, excuse me, specifically downtown, pushing it to the center and then we go push it with all the machines that I just mentioned. You can take this one blade, you can put the, the deep pitch on one side and feather it off to the, the front, bring it all, come back around, hit the other side, you got a rick in the middle. And now you V-plow it to the center in a, in a pile. Where then the other loader that we're not getting rid of, we can use that and the backhoes to help start loading so we can be more efficient and get to other roads faster. I think it'll do the same thing for the subdivisions. I, I think it's an implement that is, is gonna pay for itself in no time.
Does it work with, with either loader that, that we're considering?
Uh, yes, it does. Then, there's a, the Caterpillar had a, a specific Z-bar design on the front, which was a single ram that went and it, it only takes Caterpillar apparatus or, or implements. The John Deere and the Case both are acceptable to this type of fittings that we have for the implements that we already have. So that, say the porch that we already own, the snow bucket or the regular bucket that we have, you could change from one to the other with a quick couple. We, we wouldn't have to buy those things again.
Um, so Mayor, and I see that we don't have a match on this, so.
I apologize, it's not on.
It's not on the agenda. I was just gonna say, um, if we make our motion, we wanna include that.
I, I will say for the record, the, uh, the Case and the, uh, implement that we're asking for both come in under the two hundred and seventy-five.
Okay.
My comment, it's still under budget.
Right.
Great.
So, yeah, so.
I did call Cascade who ordered, they have three of these now. We went over and test drove theirs that they were receiving. That's how we got a line on actually sitting in one and seeing this plow and everything. They've been very happy with theirs, the service, the functionality, and they've made it one of their main pieces of equipment to move snow, especially on smaller streets, 'cause you can adjust the blade width and where the snow goes. And, uh, I, I have to say, their public works and their two operators I spoke to were very happy with that blade. They have a John Deere and a couple of Cases. Now they have three Cases now and the John Deere. They went from John Deere to Case, but they've been happy with those machines.
So if you've been into our subdivisions, like cul-de-sacs, it's pretty difficult. You have to be fairly skilled in the graders to turn those graders around in those and keep the snow heading in the right direction. I think this, this V-plow on a, any loader that it got put on would be a, a great tool to have. I think it would turn sharper and it articulates it, it would, it would cut down on time of backing up and going forward to get through those things.
It, this, uh, I mean, I know we've already approved the, the loader, but the loader and this blade, is this something that we'd be able to get in stock for this season or is this?
That's a Mike question.
Oh.
That's a loaded question. Depends on how late it snows. Theoretically, if we, if, if we just, if, the John Deere would be available sooner, but the blade and the Case, I think they have nineteen of them on order with the sixty days from when we went over there.
Right.
So it'd probably be mid-January, first of February before we may see this equipment. I, I hate to say that right now with ordering things and we waited a year and a half for a truck.
So, so we, we've had our loader that we have now for twenty-seven years. I don't want to jump onto something that I can have right now that's not what we need for the job we need to do. I would rather wait a little bit and, and persevere through what we have and make it work and then in the end have the equipment that's right for us.
He did say somebody backed out of their purchase, we would get it sooner, but.
Eighteen sooner?
Unfortunately, ordering, ordering parts or any kind of equipment right now is, a transformer's very year to a year and a half out on a lot of big transformers. So I mean, anything we do now is never guaranteed in a short period of time.
Would we wanna use the figure, uh, not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars or something? Would that be? If we were making that motion. Are you ready for motion?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the purchase of the V-blade for loader with the Sourcewell thirty-three, six, thirty-nine, not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars.
Second.
It moved in second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Blackwell?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Haper?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
Is to approve policies for leave of absence, dress code, personal appearance, employee categories and classifications and grounds for immediate termination. And Tasha, can you lead us through?
Um, so these are just more policies that we are trying to implement into the new, uh, employee handbook and policies. So we're just trying to truck along and get that handbook written and those policies written. Um, we figure we do three, four, five short ones at a time, we can get these done. So again, these have been looked over, um, by several different employees. They've been written by our HR, um, gone over it sensibly by myself. And then we have reached out to, you know, different individuals just to edit the context. I know there might be some spelling errors and some, you know, minor things. We did go over some of the clarifications. If we want to discuss those, we can. Uh, but if you guys have any questions, comments, concerns, feel free to ask me. We can go over anything you'd like.
So having had an opportunity to preview them, um, there are like minimal edits, just some corrections on some of the, um, spelling and verbiage. I think the only thing that really stood out was, um, the, um, immediate dismissal of city council members.
Yes. So that clarification was made and it will be, um, edited in. I have a meeting with her tomorrow, we will go over that. So that's just a generalized statement. It was brought to my attention that we do need to, um, make that a little different because obviously you cannot just immediately terminate a council member or an elected official of any kind, a contractor, a vendor, or anybody who's appointed, so.
I wanted to let you know that I did not suggest.
I think I was a little worried about it.
No, and, and I do appreciate how much work has gone into these. Um, I, I think it's gonna be a really great tool for the, um, city to have it in their possession. So, um, I would move to approve the leave of absence, dress code, personal appearance, employee categories and classifications and grounds for immediate termination employee categories and classifications, and grounds for immediate termination with the approved edits.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. And Natasha, again, thanks for all the hard work, and we'll need to take and say the same to Karen Jordan.
Absolutely.
It was nice working with you.
And Mike, you are the weakest one.
Yeah, that eleven thousand.
I'm going to let it go, all right?
Okay, next item is to approve the purchase of, for the electric department of a dump trailer not to exceed ten thousand dollars. And Mr. Wayne, would you mind coming up and enlightening us?
You bet. Wayne Wallace, electrical supervisor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am asking for spending authority to purchase a dump trailer not to exceed the ten thousand dollars which was budgeted to purchase. I have found one from a local vendor over here on Highway ninety-five that it should go, and with brutal negotiations, I have gotten it to where it would walk out of there for exactly ten thousand dollars. I probably should have maybe budgeted a little bit more. In fact, we'll have to purchase a spare tire next year for it. That's how, that's how close we got. So, anyway, I, I think it's a piece of equipment that all departments will find handy to use. We, it's, I want one big enough to where we can put our skid steer in it and transport from one place to the other. It has, you know, capacity to hold, what, five yards of dirt? So, anyway, I think it'll be a handy tool and a useful tool throughout the city.
That's great.
Any questions or comments for Wayne?
I'd like to say Wayne did a heck of a job negotiating, because I couldn't get him down to ten dollars for the same size anywhere we talked to.
You didn't talk about tires.
Yeah, he said shut the power off, so I don't know.
And maybe if you love nuts.
Mayor, I have motioned that we approve the purchase of the electric department's dump trailer not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Okay. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Haper?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Next is to, we need to talk about the crosswalk and solar flashing light on West Ninth Street in completion of Phase One or Phase Two of the Oldsbury subdivision. And Mike, I'm going to let you talk about this.
Before you do that, Mayor, I recuse myself from this original decision, so I should do the same tonight.
Okay.
Is there a motion to recuse?
I would move to excuse Larry Hope from this discussion due to conflict of interest.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Get out of here.
Okay, so if you look in your packets, Natasha printed you guys the discussion from the original hearing we had with them requiring a flashing signal at the crosswalk of Sundance and, can't think of the road across the street. Oh, it's, it's Oldsbury subdivision, like, the wagon road, I believe.
It's one of them.
One of them. Right there, that intersection. So in, in discussion, where we split that, that first phase into two, the developer called and asked if they could wait to do the flashing crosswalk and during the one B, because we have a one A and one B, if you remember correctly. A few months ago, they came back and asked to, to bring that, draw that back about forty lots. And it was okay, okay by the council to do so. I just, when they called and asked, I was like, I don't know. I'm going to have to ask council. You guys made the decision to put that flashing in. The other issue would be is even, the crosswalk's going to be hard to paint this time of year. It's getting pretty cold for it to stick to the road, so that'll probably be spring. But they would like to be finished by next council meeting. And they just needed some direction on whether they need to put that in now or if they can wait until the next phase starts. There'd be, I think there's approximately forty-five lots or forty-eight in this one. I'm not one-hundred percent sure what the buildable lots, because they have a few, like, park lots, and then they have the one where the storm grates is going under the building thing. So it will, if you guys haven't been out by there, it's, it's almost done. I mean, they're kicking right along out there. They got street lights and some corners of course still and a few little things, but it's, it's coming along. It's all paved. You can see they redid Ninth Street. From curb to curb, the whole thing's in and done. I mean, there's still a little bit of work, but it's looking pretty good. But like I said, they called and asked, and I said I would bring it to you guys for an answer.
Is there a question?
Yes.
So if we were to go ahead and wait till they began Phase Two, what type of documentation would we need to put in place to make sure that it was included? Well, before they could start Phase Two?
So it'd actually be one B, so it's part of the first phase where it's already documented in there.
Right.
It's just I didn't, usually, we, we would have made it put it in at the end of the first phase, right? When they got completed, we would have made sure that was part of the first phase. Where they split that, they would still have to do it to finish out Phase One, no matter what, because it's already documented. Now, whether they do it now or when they start for the next phase is the question. Can they wait and do it next time, or do they need to do it now? They would still be required to put in the crosswalk and the signage, just not the flashing beacon lights yet.
So, um, do we do any approval before they start to the next phase? Or can they just start the next phase when they're ready?
I, I would make them come in and give you an update when they start the next phase. It would be something that we'd have to come in front of council and give, at least give you an update. No, they can, they could actually start the next phase. It's already plotted and plotted and everything's been approved to do it. But that would be, can, you know, that would still, they would have to do it in the next phase, no matter what, to sign off on it, because it is in the, the paperwork that they have to do it no matter what. They just didn't know if, you know, during one A or one B, now that we split it in half, which.
But what happens if they don't put it in?
We don't sign off.
They wouldn't get the next plat finalized.
Okay.
They wouldn't get one B finalized. Yeah, they would, they would have to do it to get one B finalized, so in the next half, we wouldn't sign off the next half until it's done. So you can actually break up a plat into, you can shrink a, a platted area to a phase. I don't even think you have to go to council, actually, to do it. It just has to be done. Everything within the requirements would have to be done as far as right of way. But were we allowed to shrink it down, I was just bringing it to your guys' attention on whether we do it now or when they do the next phase.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Is there a Phase One and a Phase Two, or just a Phase one A and one B? So we have all three of those.
We actually have Phase one, two, three, and four. But they split one into one A and one B, just probably assuming cost or lack of.
I think it's been because of market. Originally, they were planning on doing Phase One and Phase Two, and then plating out Phase Three and, and Four, and they were, they were doing back-to-back. But with the market changing, they cut the project back.
And that's me, what I thought. I have a lot of mixed feelings on crossing lights.
We had a lot of discussion about that.
There was a lot of discussions, because it does have, it's.
Our whole thing was about safety. And, and I mean, personally, the moment someone moves into that division, safety is now a priority. And, and I understand that they'd still do the other things, but I, it's my opinion that they should just put it in.
And, okay, and you probably already said this, and my brain was already processing another question. Why do they not want to put it in?
Well, I don't think it's a why.
I mean, right now.
Asking if they don't have to.
Yeah, do they have to do it now? Probably because it's about seven to ten thousand dollars to put one in. That's probably why they're asking. If they can wait, they can wait. If they don't, they'll put it in. They, I mean, they weren't really like against it, and they just wanted to know if they could hold off till the next phase to do it.
I think they just wanted clarification, because it had been already in the minutes that before something was complete, they had to have it, but now the whole thing is not being completed, just the first phase.
So where does that, okay.
Where does that land?
Yeah.
And it really isn't missing your safety concerns on this one either, because there's not that much traffic coming out on the West Ninth.
So flashing, flashing lights are great, right? They do signify on a straightaway, on a long straight stretch that there is a crosswalk there and it's there. The other sign is, is that it's been told and studied that flashing lights cause a false sense of security for people. They push the button, they run out in the road. So I, that's why I'm leaving it up to you guys. I, I have mixed feelings on them. I mean, I'm not for or against. I mean, they both, it has its positives. There have been studies, you know, negative on them. It, it does make sense to have one if you have buses, kids crossing the buses or whatnot, but I, I'm not real sure of the bus route's going to be now that they changed the phase. I don't know how that's going to work, so I.
Chief, would you like to comment on this?
Yeah, please.
He thought you were just going to sit back there.
Mayor of City Council, Chief Carl Smith, Wuiser Police Department. In your discussion, listening to that, I, I'm in favor for any, any safety. So it'd be my recommendation to have it put in now. Any else?
Thank you. Any questions?
I would move to go ahead and have the crosswalk and solar flashing light on West Ninth included in the completion of Phase one A.
I second.
Of the Oldsbury subdivision. I'm probably going to clarify that.
I second.
Yes. No. Sundance. Sundance. Sundance.
I could have, it's Oldsbury, huh?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's Sundance subdivision. I would be insulted by Phase one A of Sundance.
Of Sundance. I think that motion has a correction.
Is there a second?
I second that with correction as well. Okay, it's Mike. Mike, Mike can take it.
And the reason the confusion was, because it says between Oldsbury subdivision and Sundance subdivision intersection. So, but it is Sundance putting it in.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And last, but certainly not least, on the agenda.
I look to you.
Is there a second?
Or is?
Second, all second of the morning.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.